Six, we have a presentation of the FY 2020 audit from Creedle Jones and Auga. Mr. Hall.
As you can see behind you, if you have that ability to look, our auditors from Creedle Jones and Auga are here to present. And I guess we just turn it over to Kim. Kim, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back in. For the FY 20 audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the audit time. However, we had a recurring noncompliance, so we had an FY 19 for the per diem provision, where there was no payment, simple fact of payment. Can you do your thing that you've got issue, you have been getting out of the first table of effective date, so in FY 20, there is no review of the ICS implement? A detailed schedule of the long-term debt, can you sound the annual paid 44? And the legal debt margin is only 50, which shows less than 77 million will become a disloyal part of that amount in high-debt condition, be assessed out of the real estate. That does include the compounded activities of military and annual obligation liabilities. On page 146, it says the county's ratio of annual debt travel expenses, for a total of line of debt to total governmental expenses is 3.76% in FY 20, compared to 6.15 in 19. Debt services up in FY 19 due to the jail construction site projects beginning and closing that short-term debt and beginning the long-term financing with all the debt issuance costs and everything running to that. The governmental ICS net position is 65 million. Of that amount, 41 million is unrestricted and can be used to meet the county formal obligations. The general fund and change in fund balance was an increase of 11 million. That was really due to 25 million of the debt issuance associated with the new jail project and then 21 billion capital outlay expenses for different projects. Total fund balance was 107 million, and of that amount, 33 million on time and can be used. Total general fund revenues increased 3.7 million of that amount state and federal revenue, like they're not basically 110 of that, which would expect that due to the funding proceeds in relation to the bank debt. The county's largest revenue source is still property taxes with a calculated collection rate of 95.71 for FY 20. Total general fund expenditures increased approximately 17 million with related capital outlay spending increased due to the jail projects. That's all I had. Any other questions?
Does anyone have any questions with Kim at this time? Kim, thank you. With that, we will need a motion to accept the audit for the FY 2019, 2020.
Sure, move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Kim, again, thank you for checking in with us today.
Hi, thank you.
Our next item is agenda item number seven, a report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grunstaff. Welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report as of November 30th. Personal property collection as of November 30th, we had collected 94.16 of the 2019 personal property tax. Amount collected during the month was 66,227. Real estate collection as of November 30th, we had collected 95.72% of the 2019 real estate tax. The amount collected during the month was 81,808. Since the 1st of January 2020, TACS has collected $967,590. And our debt set off since the first two years, it's 151,140. And DMV stops for December, we've only had one and only had five in November. I think the appointments are getting sparse. Today, I finished opening all the mail for our December 7 tax deadline. That was postmarked prior to December 7th. And good, so everything worked from this point forward will be never late, but we have got that in, so hopefully these collection figures will look significantly better in December. But I like what she said, our collection rate was 95.71.
Scott, I've got a question. How has COVID affected the meals tax in Henry County?
I haven't seen a big drop-off. I mean, because, you know, if they don't sell food, they don't pay, but I think most of the restaurants, someone actually said they're doing okay with the takeout and stuff, but, you know, I think the percentage-wise is probably about the same.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Agenda item number eight, Mark is not able to be with us, we will get a report later from him. Agenda item number nine, financial matters. Nine A, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $228,420 received from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation for Phase Two development at Commonwealth Crossing. The funds will be for an aerial survey and some preliminary engineering work. As part of this request, staff is also asking the board to award a contract to the Timmons Group in the amount of $187,700 for preliminary engineering services for Phase Two at CCBC.
Okay. With having heard that background material, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to this additional appropriation and award of contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the regulation of $228,420 and an awarded contract in the amount of $187,700 to Timmerson Group for engineer services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Nine B, consideration of a resolution endorsing application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Mr. Hall.
Henry County is working with our community partners at the Harvest Foundation and the Martinsville Henry County EDC to acquire additional land near the Smithfield Sports Complex. The additional land would be earmarked for future recreational use. Attached is an application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund for federal monetary support for this project.
Okay, the board's had an opportunity to review the attached resolution, and what is the pleasure of the board in regard to approval of this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Agenda item number 10, we're going to get an update on General Assembly information from Rob Caper. Rob, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Tim. Happy holidays to you. Again, I'm Rob Caper with Alcaldine Fay. Giving you a brief update on what happened legislatively over the past few months and what's going to happen the upcoming General Assembly session. Of course, there was a special session, a special session of the General Assembly between roughly August and October. It lasted longer than normal sessions do, at over 80 days. There was a lot of drama regarding what kind of bills were heard. I'll say this was the first, because of the pandemic, there was the first General Assembly session ever held where the House of Delegates was not together. They were all over the state, participating via Zoom calls and that sort of thing. There were quite a few technical glitches over the course of the special session. The local government liaisons, such as myself, worked very hard to try to protect local governments from a few bills, in particular, that would have been detrimental to localities. I think that most members of the Assembly finally realized, sometimes they don't realize what the unintended consequences of the legislation may be until they're educated about it from folks like us. Did you know your bill did X, Y, Z? And like, oh, I had no idea my bill did that. So we have to educate them about their legislation sometimes. One particular bill that I would bring to your attention has to do with legislation regarding unpaid bills to, for utilities. Let me find my notes here all fast, if you don't mind. The issue remained around, they wanted to put a moratorium on disconnections, and we fought that tooth and nail because, as you know, many localities that own their own utilities, a lot of their revenue is tied to performance, you know, bonds, revenue bonds, you have to pay your bills every month, and people don't pay their bills. Somebody had the money, has to go from somewhere. So we made the General Assembly aware of some of the hiccups regarding the legislation, those ultimately did not pass. They may be reintroduced again in the upcoming special session, but I think now that people are more educated about the consequences of their legislation, they'll be less likely to pass in the future. But we worked very hard on that. I would also point out, another piece of legislation that was very detrimental was relating to removing the sovereign immunity or the immunity from being sued. Police officers right now have a protection in the law that forbids a person from suing them for how they act on the job. This is mainly to stop frivolous lawsuits from somebody gets upset at the way they were handled during an arrest or whatever. There are already remedies in the law for people who want to complain or feel like their rights were infringed upon. There were some members of the General Assembly who wanted to remove those protections for law enforcement. Ultimately, those bills were defeated, but we have a feeling that those bills will come back during the regular session of the General Assembly, so we're preparing to fight those efforts again. I would also point to one of the books, excuse me. We had a lengthy meeting yesterday in Richmond with legislative liaisons, such as myself, who are around the state with VML and VACO. We had a number of legislators appear with us via Zoom calls to talk about the upcoming General Assembly session. You may have read in the paper that the Constitution provides for a 30-day session in odd-numbered years, with inability for the General Assembly with a 2/3 vote to stretch that from a 30-day session to a 45-day session. This has been routine for the past, since 1971, I imagine, when we had our new Constitution. This year, the Republicans, who are in the minority in both chambers, have told the legislative majority party, the Democrats, that they will not support extending the session from 30 days to 45 days during this upcoming session. The way the Constitution was drafted was to provide for lengthy sessions in even-numbered years, to provide for developing a two-year budget, and then the odd-year sessions were there to fix the budget, you know, amend it whatever way you need to, but mostly for that purpose. In practice, what's happened over the last 40, you know, three, four, five decades is the shorter session is just like the longer session, except it's 15 days shorter. So you still have a lot of bills, very controversial bills. So the Republicans, they didn't like how they were treated on a few things this past special session, so they decided not to support lengthening this coming session to 45 days. So the majority party has decided to probably have Saturday and Sunday committee meetings, have legislative sessions on Saturdays. In other words, they're trying to put 10 pounds of sugar in a 5-pound bag. They're trying to use just as much as they did before, just in a shorter time. There are also going to be severe restrictions on the number of bills a House and Senate member can submit. In the past, it's been wide open. If you're, I've seen legislators introduce 40 bills, or even more sometimes. Those legislators are very busy, you can imagine, during session, but this year, the caps will be seven bills for a House member and 12 bills for a state senator, which, if you do the math, it comes to around 1,180 or so bills for session. That's a lot, that's a lot of bills, but not nearly as many as normally during a short session. We've had 4,000 bills introduced before in short sessions. So the upcoming session also will be virtual again for the House of Delegates, is what we've been told by House leadership. They are not going to meet in one single location. They will conduct all committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, and floor sessions via Zoom. On the Senate side, they will meet again in person at the Science Museum on Broad Street, about, I don't know, 10 or 20 blocks from the Capitol. It's a very large room for social distancing purposes. They will also have more, probably more in-person subcommittee committee meetings as well on the Senate side, because the members on this committees are much smaller than the House side. But nevertheless, lobbyists such as myself will not be allowed in the General Assembly Building for session. We will not be allowed in the Science Museum during, when the Senate meets. Our ability to have in-person, face-to-face conversations with most members of the Assembly will be virtually nothing. You know, it'll be all by phone, or by texting, or by Zoom calls and that sort of thing. We had, like I said, we met yesterday about this and had a long talk about how does this, we saw how that impacted us during the special session. I would say it was not, it was not conducive to good government. The transparency level goes down quite a bit. The ability to influence legislation while it's being decided goes down quite a bit. I'm not going to say make our job harder, that's irrelevant for us. I mean, we'll work as hard as we need to work for our clients, but I'm just pointing out that our inability to be in front of a subcommittee meeting like this, where you can see people's faces as you speak, and how is your, how is your idea impacting what they're thinking, that all goes away on Zoom calls. And, you know, when you're trying to text somebody or what your position is while they're meeting at the same time, it's going to be very difficult. So we, when we talked yesterday, there's going to be more, more communication and more working together than really ever among the legislative liaisons who are responsible for representing local governments in front of the General Assembly. We will determine much quicker than in the past what bills negatively impact our localities and work with efforts with the committee chairman or with the member who introduced the bill to let them know what their bill does and ask them to either remove it or amend it, and that sort of thing. So, and frankly, it's going to, there will be times when our reliance on our clients, either our county administrators, or city managers, or city councilmen, or board supervisors to weigh in directly with a state senator or a delegate would be helpful as well. So, I mean, if you, do you have the, did they have the thing there? Okay, so if we could go through the legislative agenda for a moment, I'd be happy to talk to you about that for a minute. The first bullet on here is relating to economic development tools. Be back up for one second, too. The governor tomorrow morning will make his, make his presentation about the amendments that he is supporting to the state budget for the upcoming session. This is an annual thing, happens every year, this time in December. Typically, it's done in person with the governor standing in front of the money committees, the House and Senate Appropriations Committees, and the House Finance Committee, telling them, these are the tax changes I'd like to see, and these are the budget amendments I'd like to see. So that is not going to happen in person this year because of the pandemic. So he will do that online tomorrow morning, letting the General Assembly know how he would like to amend the budget. Now, they just did amend the budget for the special session, they made a bunch of changes to it two months ago, but there will be more. The revenue forecast for the state's not nearly as bad as they thought it would be. Sales and use taxes actually are pretty, actually higher than last year. The unemployment numbers have negatively impacted the payroll tax revenue that's coming in, but generally speaking, the state's revenue projections are higher than they estimated by a lot, frankly. Like, I think they've estimated 1.5% growth, I think right now we're 4% or 5% over estimates, which is a, which is a good thing. So what does that do? That leaves the governor some money to play with, and one of the things that we hope for in Henry County is that the new economic development incentives to allow the state to be more competitive with neighboring states when we compete for economic development opportunities. As the document says here, North Carolina routinely provides larger incentive packages than we can offer in Virginia. We would like the state to beef up the amount of money available to secure new economic development here in the Commonwealth. So that's the very first bullet. The second bullet has to do with the ADM, average daily membership or average daily students at public schools across the state. There is uniformity among localities across the state that they would like the General Assembly to hold the localities harmless in this regard. For instance, if you're a locality and you estimate that you'd have 10,000 students, but because of the COVID thing, maybe more parents decided to homeschool their kids or whatever, now you're only at 9,500. Well, that would, under normal times, that would negatively impact how much money you receive from the state for your local school system. What they're asked, what the localities are asking the governor and the General Assembly to do is change the law to hold localities harmless. If we projected 10,000 based on previous years, number of students we've had, then don't penalize us for having fewer students this year because of the pandemic. We want to get past this year and then go into the next school year, and then we can start kind of from scratch, hopefully, then. Based on what I heard yesterday from a number of legislators, that's probably, that'll probably happen. There probably will be a hold harmless agreement with the localities and the school systems based on the lower ADMs than they had hoped for. I was pointing out to Tim earlier, Fairfax County has 160,000 students. They lost a lot of students this year because of parents homeschooling their kids or putting them into private school for a year or what have you. So Fairfax County might lose 10,000 or 15,000 students, which is, you know, larger than the number of students that most counties have, frankly. The chairman of the Senate Finance Committee is from Fairfax County. The chairman of the House Appropriations Committee is from Prince William County, who also has a lot of students, and also has equal, you know, lower number of students than they projected as well. So I think that the money committees will hold harmless to localities for lower ADM than projected and will not give the localities less money than they were expecting for the schools, for the school year. The other part of this bullet on education has to do with NCI. This morning, I met with Senator Stanley up at his office, just south of the lake. We talked a length about NCI. They're working on a number of great projects to bring more students to NCI. They are trying to partner with four-year colleges, engineering school, to bring advanced manufacturing classes to NCI here. That's what Bill thinks that NCI's strength would be, is advanced manufacturing, based on all the things they want to do here in South Side. Virginia State University has a program in advanced manufacturing, a master's program in advanced manufacturing. He's working closely with them to try to bring them, bring more of their classes down here for potential students to take classes in engineering over there at NCI. So there's a lot of progress being made on that bullet, and we'll see what happens during the General Assembly session in that regard as well. The next bullet on here has to do with law enforcement and public safety. There's been a lot of talk about how to deal with sheriff's deputy salaries, law enforcement salaries generally, state police salaries. There was some effort made during the special session to provide more funding for law enforcement. I think there'll be a much bigger undertaking during this General Assembly session to better fund law enforcement salaries. And also point out, many other constitutional officers are vastly underpaid. For instance, the clerk of court's office, I'm told that in larger cities and counties in the state, they literally can't keep the employees long enough. What happens is somebody gets hired by a county circuit court clerk, they work there for a couple of years at the most, so they learn the system, and then they're immediately gobbled up by a law firm, offering them twice as much money, and so they lose these people all the time. So the circuit court clerks especially are asking for big pay raises for their, for their staff and that sort of thing. So that's one effort here on the legislative agenda. The per diem rates for local jails is a classic, every-year fight. I know when I'd worked for another, another large locality, we had submitted budget amendments every year for more money for per diem for, in other words, the amount of money the state pays for you to hold their prisoners, frankly, that they're, that are not in state prisons that are being held in local jails, because there's no room in the state prisons. They reimburse the localities probably less than it costs to hold the prisoner, so you literally lose money every day you're holding onto a state prisoner. There's been a lot of efforts by members of the Assembly to increase per diem rates over the years, and I think they'll probably try that again this year. And then this other bullet here regarding continuing Medicaid and Medicare insurance coverage for those individuals covered prior to being admitted to a local jail for the duration of their confinement in jail. One of the big promises made to localities when the whole fight was underway regarding expanding Medicaid in the state was the local inmates were supposed to be covered by Medicaid while they were being held or incarcerated, if you will, in local jails. So fulfilling that, fulfilling that would be a very high priority for us this upcoming session. The next bullet regarding the Martinsville Southern Connector Project. Senator Stanley and I had a long talk about that this morning. He told me that he was going to introduce a budget amendment to fund the Martinsville Southern Connector, which is, I believe, 650 million, roundabout, 200 million dollars. Now, that budget amendment's not going to go very far, but hopefully it will at least cause a conversation to be had about how the state is going to fund this project. I'll remind everyone, the deal, if you will, the deal, I guess that was struck with the CTB earlier this year, back in January, February, was we get three years from the date that the, that the Federal Register publishes the record of decision. And that's supposed to come in January, February of this coming year. When the record of decision is published in the Federal Register, that's sort of a three-year process, where by the end of that three-year process, we've kind of, the CTB has got to adopt a funding mechanism and fund the construction of the Martinsville Southern Connector. So that clock isn't started yet, but it's going to start very soon. I would point out that there's going to be a governor's race coming up this, coming in 2021. I would encourage the county, when candidates for governor come here, asking for your support. I would encourage you to ask them to support the Martinsville Southern Connector through their efforts to influence the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Remember, the General Assembly doesn't really fund roads. The General Assembly funds the CTB. The CTB is the one who chooses what roads get built and which builds, which roads get funded and rehabilitated and that sort of thing in the Commonwealth. So the governor carries a great deal of weight, and of course, he selects the CTB numbers, and I would encourage you to, when you, when the governor candidates come here, I guess they're looking for support, I would ask them about the Martinsville Southern Connector. It's a very important project to the locality and to the region, so that would certainly bring that to your attention as well. The issue regarding on here, I guess it's the fourth bullet down on the transportation section regarding Lover's Leap in Patrick County. The state was supposed to have sold bonds for 58, the 58 bonds, if you will, to do this project this, this past year. So I will double-check on that to see if that was done, but that project is moving forward. It's in the six-year plan for the Commonwealth Transportation Board to move forward, so that's going to happen. And then regarding this smart-scale program, typically those projects that are selected by the, by the smart-scale process, if you will, those typically come out in late January or early February, those are published. They were two years ago, and that's when the scores for the projects come out. The CTB generally just takes the scores, they don't really try to finagle the list once it's, what they do is, let's say you've got $100 million in a construction district, they get the scores back, they look down the list until it catches $100 million, they draw a line, everything above that gets funded, below that doesn't get funded. So there's not a whole lot of horse trading going on after the score's already decided. So hopefully, the projects that were submitted by Henry County will score well against the other projects in the state and district, and will get funded. That's our, that's our goal there. Under other areas of concern, regarding the process that is currently law regarding reversion from that city's undertake when they want to revert to town status, I do agree that the law currently seems to put the cities in a commanding position over the counties they're trying to merge into, which doesn't really make any sense when the cities are typically the ones that have a bad fiscal rating, and they want to merge into a locality with a better fiscal rating than they have. You would think that the counties would be, have a little bit more say, rather than the tail dragging the dog, it would be the other way around. We need to take a look at that process and make sure that the counties have a little bit more say in the process on the reversion process when cities undertake becoming towns. The CSA, the Children's Services Act program, there was just a report that came out within the past week or so on the issue of at-risk students who need to go into more one-on-one education or better or different, or even live-in schools because of their, if there was some kind of developmental problem, something like that. It's extremely expensive. Right now, the parents seem to drive the process, and the school systems have to sort of go along with what the parents decide to do. I've personally seen this in my own friends and family relationships I have, where a family wanted to do something, the school system fought them, the parents did not agree with the school system wanted, and they went ahead and did what they were allowed to do, and now it costs the locality a lot of money, and it didn't cost the parents very much. You wonder if that's the right system. But for a parent who's trying to fight for the best interests of their child, you can understand why they would choose maybe the more expensive route sometimes, even though they don't have to pay very much for it. But there is an effort underway to amend that system or look at that system. What the legislative summary here says is, we, any changes made to that system, we prefer that the localities themselves are left whole. The state is a major player in the system, they're a major funder in the system. The state is a major player in the system, they're a major funder in the system and any changes that are made to Children's Services Act should be borne by the state, not the, not just shoved on the locality, it's a burden for them as an unfunded mandate. Um, and then, um, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, as you know, that the census system had run its course throughout this year. The Census Bureau is supposed to release their numbers about how many people live in each state, each locality coming up, I think in January or February, they'll release those numbers. At that point, the redistricting process will kick off around every state in the country. Um, in Virginia, we just passed a constitutional amendment that's, creates a redistricting commission to take a stab at drawing the lines first. Uh, if they, if they are not successful, then the task would fall to the Supreme Court. Probably they would appoint a special master to draw the lines, they would bring him back to the court, the court would approve it or disapprove it or amend it or whatever, but the point is there will be a redistricting commission that gets a stab at this first. The General Assembly has appointed their members, I believe they each have four senators and four delegates. Uh, they've already been appointed, Delegate Les Adams, who represents Henry County, at least part of it, is on that commission. Um, citizen members will be appointed soon. Um, once the numbers are released from the Census Bureau back to Virginia, they'll start to meet and determine how to draw legislative, state and House of Delegates, the state senate and congressional district boundaries. Um, Tim and I discussed this before the meeting today. Um, I would just say this, uh, having gone through this process several times now, um, starting in probably ninety, the two thousand or ninety-eight session, we redistricted congressional seats because of court order. I was very involved in two thousand, the congressional side. In two thousand and ten, I was around when they redistricted legislative and congressional lines again. I'll just say this, um, now that we have a nonpartisan redistricting commission, take advantage of the opportunity to let them know what you would like. Um, if you would like to be in a single congressional district, let them know that. If you have a choice of which district you'd rather be in, the ninth district, which goes of course to the west, or the fifth district, which goes to your east and the north, I would let them know that. If you have, I mean, and, and not that you're trying to pick your congressman per se, because that's not really how the system works, but which district better represents what, what, what you all, what you have here in Henry County? Um, the fifth district currently goes from Danville all the way to, all the way to the outskirts of the DC suburbs, all the way to northern Faukeer County. Um, I think it was all the way to sixty-six, where, where sixty-six goes through Faukeer, way up there near Loudoun County. Um, it's a huge district, uh, it's very diverse. The ninth district of course goes to your west, all the way to Kentucky line, to Tennessee and then up to Roanoke City, but, um, on the state senate side, if you want to have one state senator, remember a state senator district's going to be on two hundred and twenty thousand people probably. Uh, right now, uh, you're in a single senate district, Senator Stanley's district, but I think that, that's good, that, I, I believe that's good for the county, I'll tell you why. With your population over fifty thousand people, you represent about a quarter of a senate district. You're going to, you, you, your senator has to pay attention to you because you represent a huge part of their district. If you were in two senate districts, even if you're divided equally in twenty-five thousand in each, you'd be one, what, one, uh, one-eighth of a district rather than one-quarter of a district. So not, you wouldn't, you're not as important to a single senator's district as you would be if you were worth twenty-five percent of the district. So, and on the House of Delegates side, I think a delegate district will probably have eighty-five thousand people per district. Um, with your population, you should represent, if you wanted one delegate, you'd be, you'd probably be two-thirds of a delegate district or, like right now, you're cut into thirds. Um, the, all three of your delegates are fantastic people, I'm not talking about that part of it, I'm just saying if, um, if you have, if you have goals that you would like to see the redistricting commission follow for Henry County, I would encourage you to let them know what you would like. And not by picking your delegate per se, but just saying, we'd prefer to be in a single house district or a single state senate district or a single congressional district because of, and then explain why, but, and you would do that by resolution, I believe, and then forward it to them and that sort of thing. But redistricting happens once every ten years and it's a very important function. Um, we're into, entering a new era with this redistricting commission, it'll be interesting to see how it works. Um, but that's, that's the constitution now, that's what we're going to have to deal with. I think it'll be better frankly than it was before where you had, you know, two or three house members and two or three senators choosing how to draw the lines through the entire state and then everyone pretty much rubber stamp what they came up with, because otherwise you would get into a free-for-all and then no one really wanted to go down that road. So, um, we'll see how it works, but, um, redistricting this year will be a very big deal and have a long-term impact on the, on the county. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about other issues that I didn't bring up that are important to you.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Hall, do you have anything to add?
Uh, Governor, uh, Rob and I are in regular contact this time of year, so we'll be glad to carry anything that you have to Rob. We'll see where we go.
Like I said, if I don't mind, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm, I'm here as a resource for the board and certainly for, um, Mr. Hall, of course. Um, if you read something in the paper that makes you scratch your head, say, what's that about? Or if you have an issue comes to your mind, or if a constituent calls you with something that you're concerned about, please contact me, let me know, just shoot me an email or you can call me or text me, I'll get right back to you as soon as possible. Um, the session moves very quickly, especially these shorter ones, and with a thirty-day session versus forty-five, it'll be very quick this time. So, um, if something is coming up, get to me as soon as possible that you, that you care about, please get to me as soon as possible, because like I said, things move very fast this session. The crossover will be two, between fourteen and eighteen days after a session starts. That's when all the house bills have to be done with by the house and go to the senate and vice versa, but it'll move very fast. Um, so I guess we will be working every weekend, every day for the session, so we here as a resource for you.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is agenda item number eleven, consideration of the date and time for the twenty twenty-one organizational meeting, Mr. Hall.
Board supervisors is required to have an organizational meeting at or soon after the first of the year. During this meeting, the board will set its meeting dates for the twenty twenty-one calendar, an elected chairman and vice chairman, and a reminder, county offices are closed on Friday, January first.
Having said that, uh, with the first available business day being the fourth, uh, does the fourth at five PM work for everyone? I'll leave that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second, that we set it for January the fourth, twenty twenty-one at five PM. All in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. Uh, agenda item number twelve, consideration of FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget calendar, Mr. Hall.
Uh, within your working papers is a proposed calendar preparation for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two county budget. The calendar provides for preparation, adoption and appropriation of the budget in accordance with the deadlines provided in the code of Virginia. Since we provided your working papers, Dr. Martin raised a, a conflict that he may have with the, the original proposed budget calendar, so we have prepared an alternative budget calendar, which we passed out and left at your seat. Uh, staff can make any one of these work, so it's really up to the board as to which way which is to go.
All right. Does the alternate, uh, schedule that's provided at your desk work for everyone? If so, uh, I will need a, a motion that, uh, we adopt the, uh, proposed alternate budget calendar. So moved?
Second.
A motion, second. Any question or discussion?
Thank you for your consideration.
All in favor? It's six-zero, uh, Jennifer. Uh, agenda, uh, item number thirteen, general highway matters, we have Lisa Hughes from VDOT. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, just a few items to cover with you all, some, uh, issues we had addressed. I know, Mr. Bryant, you had, um, called me about some debris in the road on two-twenty. I, I think we've, we've got that issue resolved. It may periodically occur, but I, I think we've come to an understanding. Uh, Sunset Drive, Mr. Slaughter, we took care of that. Um, and Mr. Zaire, I had gotten your email on Shannon Hills and, and I was in there looking at the, the driveway issue and yes, that pipe has gotten much worse, so we've got to accelerate plans to, to get that replaced. Uh, Mr. Bryant, you had also asked me maybe a couple of meetings back about our smart scale project in Collinsville and we are now actively negotiating right-of-way. We don't need a lot, but we need easements from everybody along that, um, block and, and we're working on getting those now. The ad date right now is later next year, but you know, that, that can change, so, but, but right now that's, that's what it is and we'll see how the, the right-of-way process goes. Uh, I think David Kaiser had told you last meeting that we've got a large, uh, pipe repair project is proposed on the bypass. Um, so those pipes are showing their age now, but, uh, anyway, that's, that's maintenance funds, but, but you may see that work happening, uh, probably later next year. Uh, the last thing I have is, is of course the weather tomorrow, you know, we've pre-treated the roads today, tomorrow's going to be a bad day, um, stay home if you can, so that's all I had.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Hughes?
And Lisa, you're going to work on that, I'd emailed you about the.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, uh, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? I see one hand. Um, um, I need to briefly read, uh, board's policy statement for the record. This is time for public comment, we welcome your participation in today's meeting, we're here to listen to you. Uh, by coming to the podium, you've agreed, uh, you will accept respect for the board and its members, you will receive the same consideration from the board, please try to keep your presentation, no more than three minutes. Uh, Mr. Stigoff?
Okay, thanks. The reason, um, the reason I'm here today is just to cover some things, uh, on Oakland Drive there in Collinsville. You know, then when they first started that project down there to build a new school, they built it out on the Fixable Road, the county purchased three lots and houses there on Oakland Drive, right there where Collinsville Primary is at. And, um, Randy Scott did approach them and ask them to go ahead and rent the houses out to make money for the taxpayers, but they said they weren't in the renting business. They said, we are, uh, we're using them for storage, but we didn't see anything stored in them, so then they told us we'd be arrested if we went back on the property. And, uh, then they came in there and destroyed the houses, tore them down. So I went through a FOIA request and asked what they had actually paid for those houses, and I don't think the taxpayers know, is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for those three houses and it cost ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to tear them down. They said that's approximately, they didn't tell me if that was exact. And I don't think the houses would have been in the way of what's going on there now, the construction on this, ever what they're going to do there, make apartments out of it. But, uh, then on November the twenty-seventh of last year, twenty nineteen, it was Wednesday morning, nine o'clock, they had an auction there. Uh, there's an auction off the three school, mobile school rooms that's right there next to Collinsville Primary. So I'd never been to an auction before, so I thought I'd go to it. And, uh, I didn't like what I seen right from the start and I could, told the county, I didn't like them having an auction on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock because everybody's working. I didn't think it'd be a lot of people there. He could have put them on Facebook or had them appraised or anything. And when the auction started, uh, this one boy told the auctioneer, he said, I give you a hundred dollars for the first unit and that was the only bid he got. So I thought the auction should have been called right then, that's my opinion, because we wasn't getting any bids on it and the taxpayers are going to lose money. So then I didn't hear the, anybody say any rules to it, like you're responsible for what you buy and it's got to be off county property within thirty to sixty days, which that was appropriate. And so that left the door open for somebody evidently, because it stayed on the county property almost a year before the person that bought it could resell it. It's ten months really, like in a few days. And I, I called six different county officials trying to get them to make them move this property, their property off of county property, because I don't think you can store anything on county property, I don't know who could give you permission to. And, um, I didn't have any luck with that. Uh, one of the county officials encouraged me to come here and talk and to tell the public what's going on, but I know the, the bullet didn't edit everything I say, make it sound like something else or somebody's getting them to do it. So, uh, but the county did call me back and said they had just as much right to buy it as anybody. I said, yeah, they did. And I said, I'll stand up for that. The gentleman that bought unit one and number three, he paid two hundred dollars for both of them and he did exactly what he's supposed to do, he moved it off the property, but he couldn't move unit three off because unit two was blocking it and nobody, nobody would make them move it. So I started putting pressure on the county and they called me back and said that they was, uh, having a problem moving it or was they having a problem selling it. And then, uh, they called me back and said the McGee lady bought it, I didn't buy that. And then they said the person that bought it got sick, then the person that, they didn't know who bought it, the last thing they told me. So, uh, I started watching the internet because I was putting pressure on them. So there, it showed up on the internet, on Facebook, for sale for three thousand dollars. And they just told me before that the, these trailers weren't worth anything, but I proved them wrong on that, because it was on the internet for three thousand dollars. And that was in about seventh, eighth month. And the gentleman that bought number three finally just took number two and left number three there. And this, uh, marina down in North Carolina finally bought it and sent Tony's, uh, mobile home service up here to get it. I just think the taxpayers lost money on that. And I still don't know who actually bought unit number two. There's a lot of rumors going on and you can't go by rumors, but this, to me, is, it wasn't handled the way that the taxpayers, the county didn't handle it right. That's my opinion. And it's nothing I can do. I talked to Sheriff Perry on it and he said that he couldn't do anything because the county allowed him to do it. But, uh, they did encourage me to come in and talk and even the superintendent of the schools called me and thanked me for letting them know what's going on, because they got a lot on their agenda now, fighting this COVID-nineteen with the children in the schools and things. But I just think they need to watch the taxpayers' dollars more, that's, they could have got more money for them than that. I appreciate it.
Does anyone else wishing to address the board under matters presented by the public? Okay, uh, agenda item fifteen, informational items, uh, we will begin by taking comments from the board, uh, starting with Mr. Zaire.
No, sir.
Dr. Martin?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
No, sir.
Uh, I've got one thing for the board's consideration, uh, as Mr. Hall noted earlier, uh, in regard to our organizational meeting, uh, county, uh, offices are closed on January first. Also as part of, uh, the, uh, state holidays, the offices are closed the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, is that correct, Mr. Hall? That's correct. Um, we know, uh, this has been an unusual year for all of our employees, we know that they've stepped up when we've asked them to and gone well and, uh, above and beyond. Uh, I was discussing this with a county employee and said, you know, even an hour or two helps sometimes toward the holidays. I would like, uh, to propose that we consider a two-hour early out on the twenty-third and a four-hour early out on the thirty-first. Would that be workable by the, uh, county board?
Yes, sir, we can make it, make it work absolutely.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for two-hour early out on the twenty-third and a four-hour early out on the thirty-first. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. That's all I have. Mr. Hall?
Uh, I don't have anything other than to say thank you for that. Um, Mr. Adams was correct, this has been a difficult year and it continues to be difficult, um, but our folks have just done outstanding work. our folks have just done outstanding work. I cannot say enough about the spirit and the will and the attitude of the folks that work under your umbrella and under the constitutional office. It's just amazing to see that our folks continue to do not just what they're expected to do, but more than that. And they do it with a smile. Sometimes you can see it behind the mask, sometimes you can't, but it's a phenomenal place to work and a tremendous amount of respect that I have for the folks that work here. So we thank you very much for that. And I'll leave you with this, this is kind of my soapbox, but please continue to urge those around you to wear masks, watch where they stand, wash their hands, three W's. We can kind of see our way around the corner on this thing right now, and it would be awful for us to mess up this close to getting out of the bunker. So just please encourage folks to do that, and we've done the same internally. And stay safe, enjoy your holiday, and most of all, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to Agenda Item Sixteen. If someone will cite the items allowing us to go into a closed meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion that we go into a closed meeting. Under Section 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the building code Board of Appeals and a fire code Board of Appeals. 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition, disposal of real estate. And 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. See everyone upstairs. Board came out of closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, a second by Mr. Zaire. Mr. Wagner, will you pull the board, please?
Confirming closed session if you discuss public business matters promptly and identified a motion to go into a closed session. Mr. Zaire?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Flora?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a countywide appointment for the building code Board of Appeals for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we reappoint Charlie Martin, Rodney Clark, Bruce Atkins, Eddie Light, and Larry Wright to the Board of Code, the Building Code of Board of Appeals for the length of four years. Expiration date's going to be January the thirty-first of 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. And Ms. Buchanan, in regard to the Fire Code Board of Appeals, I believe that you have some appointments for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move that Darrell Emerson, H. William Martin, Jr., Ken Atkins, and Joel Barnes be reappointed to the Fire Code Board of Appeals, and to appoint Joe Skares for a term that expires January thirty-first of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Hall, are there any items that need to come before the board, before we adjourn?
No, sir, not on my board.
Board members, do you have any? Is this a full adjournment or continuation?
Full adjournment.
Full adjournment. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor, stand up and lead.
Merry Christmas to y'all.